To use tomatoes in two different ways. And that's going to come up again in the next recipe.
The next recipe being the one in which you include roasted tomatoes and fish?
Yeah, so this is for a roasted bluefish dish. You could use cod or snapper. And you layer it with tomatoes, onions, and basil, kind of like a layered thing. Then you sprinkle cherry tomatoes around the edge. And you top it with grated lemon zest and panko, the Japanese breadcrumbs. And again, the whole cherry tomatoes are going to have a very different texture than your sliced tomatoes. And that is a great summer main course.
And anytime you're dealing with tomatoes, as with other ingredients, but you're dealing with the liquid that's inside them. I mean, when you-
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So here's another dish. This is something I love. It's a white bean. It can be a stew. You could think of it as a rustic soup or a salad. You take white beans and you use the tomatoes again in two different ways. The first thing you do is you grate a raw tomato on the largest side of a cheese grater. This is something the Spanish do a lot as a base for paella or for tomato toast.
This sounds like a messy proposition, Kathy.
It can be. It squirts. But you want, it also is the fastest way to get tomato juice. You get the gorgeous juiciness out of the tomatoes. You cook that down with onions and garlic. You add white beans. And then you add chopped tomatoes. So you've got this juicy, instant base of a sauce. And then wonderful tomatoes, peppers, and buttery white beans in this very rustic stew.
So we only have less than a minute left. But Kathy, can you tell me how I choose a tomato at the store?
Yeah, you want to smell it. You want to get a tomato scent. You want to gently feel it. It needs to be a little bit soft without being overly ripe and mushy. You know, and really, you want to be going to a farmer's market or buying them from a farm stand this time of year. A lot of grocery stores do refrigerate tomatoes, which, as we just learned, is not a good idea.
We've been talking tomatoes and tomato recipes with Here and Now resident chef Kathy Gunst. We will have all of Kathy's tips and recipes at hereandnow.org. Kathy, thanks as always.
Thank you, Celeste.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Celeste Headley.
I'm Peter O'Dowd. Don't refrigerate those tomatoes. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Indeed, a hiring platform offering 135 skills tests to help businesses connect with candidates who align with their job requirements. Learn more at indeed.com/credit.
Moment of silence for personal prayer. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for August 24, 2021. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesdays of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Saturday at 4:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. And our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend a Board of Supervisors meeting must contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. I would ask this time if you would turn off your cell phones or place them on silence. Item A of our agenda is our opening ceremonies. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Item B is a request to postpone to add to or change the order of agenda items. Is there such a request to the board members? Mr. O'Donnell?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C is the Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Item C1 is a proclamation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors. I would like to welcome Jill Loop, our Director of Economic Development, to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors is the largest trade association in the Roanoke Valley. And we are honored to recognize and celebrate them on their 100th anniversary in the Roanoke region. The association currently has more than 140 firms representing more than 1,400 Realtors and 285 affiliate company members. I can say from personal and professional experience that I've worked with many members of the association for the past two decades. And we have realized many successes in Roanoke County as a result of the partnerships, leadership, and professionalism demonstrated by their members. The members of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors are major contributors to the area economy, facilitating well over 1.8 billion annually in residential and commercial real estate transactions on behalf of buyers and sellers. And we are grateful for their numerous contributions. Here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the association are Walter Gru, 2021 President of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors, Jim Sweetwood, Director of Communications and Events, and Joe Sutcliffe, Director of Economic and Governmental Affairs.
Madam Clerk, if I can get you to read the proclamation.
Proclamation congratulating the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors upon its 100th anniversary. Whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors, the largest trade association in the Roanoke Valley, is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2021. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors is recognized by the National Association of Realtors as being chartered on April 27, 1921, originally as the Roanoke Real Estate Board representing just the city of Roanoke and officially added Roanoke County to its jurisdiction in 1961. And whereas, beginning with 25 firms, the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors currently is comprised of more than 140 firms representing more than 1,480 Realtor members and more than 285 affiliate company members, the association is one of the 28 local associations that comprise the Virginia Realtors. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors advocates, promotes, and supports policies for a stronger, robust economy and quality of life throughout the Roanoke region and recognizes that homeownership is key to the American dream and works to make that dream accessible to all. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors provides exceptional value and service to its members, helps to advance the real estate industry, and empowers Realtors to impact the industry through advocacy, community engagement, and training and professional resources. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors strongly promotes the principles of fair housing for all and members are held to a high ethical standard and adhere to the Realtors' Code of Ethics. And whereas the members of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors are major contributors to the area economy, facilitating well over 1.8 billion annually in residential and commercial real estate transactions on behalf of buyers and sellers and is dedicated to providing support to charitable organizations in the Roanoke Valley. And resolved by the County of Roanoke, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors hereby commends the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors on the occasion of its 100th anniversary. And be it further resolved, we bestow our congratulations and celebrate the contributions of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors on this historic occasion and extend our appreciation to all its members for their many achievements and service to the citizens of the Roanoke Valley and the real estate profession.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
And I will add to that, that, you know, the Realtors have been a big part of what we've done, especially over the last few years. I know when, I guess I was chairman of '15, '16, we were rolling out the 419 plan. I remember sitting with you over here. You really wanted to understand what that was about because it was an economic driver of how we were looking to the future. And I know that you carried that on to the people that were around you. And, you know, as we see today, as we've, Ms. Loop has announced two more additions to the Tanglewood Center. That's coming to life. So it's something we put out there and we're actually seeing the fruition of that. And again, thank you for all of your support in making that happen. So, yes, sir. Any other comments from board members?
I would just like to say one quick thing, Mr. Chairman, and that is congratulations on 100 years. That's quite the mark there. And 1.8 billion does not go unnoticed. That's a huge factor for our economy also. And just, it dawned on me as we were hearing all the great things that have happened and have gone on because of your board is that many times you are the first face of people who are new to this area. And so we thank you for that. We thank you for being a great liaison for us. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah. As a member of the Realtor Association, I just want to be sure everybody knows we're more than just Realtors selling houses. A lot of us use the association for a lot of different things, for property management, for HOA association management, commercial real estate, like you mentioned. Joe handles governmental affairs, right? So there's a lot of different parts that go along with it. And but my family has been a part of it for quite a while. We're, we enjoy being part of that 100 years and just another 100 to go.
Mr. North?
Congratulations. No one here looks like they're 100 years old, so.
Joe's been deserved well.
Especially Joe. Congratulations and continued success in the many years ahead. Appreciate what you do for the community. I remember when I was in Washington working, they had a reception put on by a group of Realtors for all of us that were moving to Roanoke. And so that was a nice event. It was a welcoming event to realize that the folks here cared enough to come up there and show us all about the Roanoke Valley and have a reception and so forth. So you don't have to be here to see the welcoming because you folks go outside this region where necessary to attract people that wish to come here to work and live and play. And so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to congratulate you. I think you really provide a valuable service to all of our citizens, both buyers and sellers. And I think it's without your professionalism and your hard work, it really makes things easier for citizens as they try to go through that process of buying and selling new homes. And I think that's sort of the bedrock of the American dream. So I applaud you for all the hard work you do. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from your group?
Walter Gru, 2021, Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors President, would just like to thank Board of Supervisors and Chairman Peters for recognizing us today. You know, our association's primary mission on a daily basis is to foster equal housing and fair housing across the Roanoke Valley, education, and also just to put a good face on the real estate industry as well. You know, we, of course, are out there every day trying to make things happen for people. And, you know, just to be recognized like this is certainly a great thing for our association. And again, thank you all.
I think we have one more picture over here. Again, thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, item D is briefings. Item D1 is a briefing to update the Board of Supervisors on the Virginia Department of Transportation project to repair Route 220 slope failure at Crossbow Circle. I'd like to welcome Megan Cronice, our Transportation Planning Administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have a quick presentation to go through today. We wanted to brief you on this because, of course, Route 220 is a major north-south corridor through the valley. This will be a very visible project, so we wanted to make sure you knew what was going on. We will talk briefly about the location, the issue, the proposal for fixing the problem, phasing, schedule, property impacts, and then questions at the end. So the location is south of the intersection of Crossbow Circle and Franklin Road, Route 220, on the west side of Route 220. You can see that in the yellow outline. It's mostly Old Heritage Corporations property. This picture shows from Honey Tree across the street the view of the slope and the two houses that are closest to the roadway, 5243 and 5247 Archer Drive. The issue, in 2019 and 2020, heavy rains saturated the slope. In May of 2020, the slope failed with mud and debris sloughing to the edge of the Route 220 trebleway. In June of 2020, VDOT site visit discovered a sheer scarp, which is a failed, steep slope that's located uphill from the roadway. And between June 2020 and today, VDOT has worked on scoping the project, obtaining access, and project funding. So the proposal is to repair the slope failure using soil nail walls to support the slope. That's indicated in green, as well as a geosynthetically confined soil wall along the roadway to hold up the slide mass, which will have a concrete block wall face, which will look something like this. In terms of phasing, phase one will be all of the work except the soil nail wall on the upper scarp, which is about $1.4 million. It's outlined in white. And phase two is the upper soil nail wall on the upper scarp, which is about $500,000. That's phase two outlined in yellow. The schedule, what is complete currently is the Crossbow Circle construction entrance, which is shown in yellow, coming in from the right side of the slide. So clearing and grading will begin the end of August, first week of September. This will be for the work area and for the staging area, which is off to the right. This will be about two weeks' worth of clearing and grading. And by the end of the year, they anticipate that phase one will be complete and phase two will occur when additional funding is obtained. In terms of property impacts, there is an existing VDOT slope easement that was obtained in 1964, which includes the sheer scarp, which was great planning. Right-of-entry agreements have been secured from Old Heritage Corporation and Honey Hills Real Estate LLC. And the residency has communicated with Yamamoto's at 5243 Archer and with the Akerson's at 5247 Archer. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if they are technical in nature, our colleagues from VDOT are here, Ray Barney and Brian Blevins.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Cronice, rhetorical, or maybe you need an answer. But if this work were not done, it would adversely affect the Akerson's and the Yamamoto's, correct? I mean, it could adversely affect their homes. And their homes could end up in 220, in a worst-case situation.
I believe that is a worst-case scenario, yes. If the slope continues to fail and erode, then eventually that hillside comes down and the houses are on the hillside. So is that correct? VDOT partners, yes, I get head nuts.
I guess my point is, is that it's a surprisingly large amount of money that has to be allocated to cure the problem. But if you didn't cure the problem, you'd have a landslide of mud and dirt in 220, and you could adversely affect some citizens' homes.
And I believe that part of the VDOT slope easement that was obtained in 1964, I believe it's on the very corners of both of those properties, correct? So they were aware that there was a slope easement when they purchased. So there's, yes, there's potential impact to their properties.
So what happens if the second phase of the funding does not miraculously occur?
My understanding is that the first phase of the project will protect Route 220. So the second phase, hopefully, will also be funded in the near future once the first phase is wrapping up, is the hope and anticipation.
I hope so. I hope so, too. Thank you.
Mr. North?
I was going to ask similar questions like this one did. So with the state of Virginia having a surplus of $2.6 billion and the money just raining from the skies of Washington down upon Virginia and the other states, there shouldn't be any problem getting that half a million dollar. I guess I'll ask that question to our friends back there at VDOT. And if you need any help in getting that money, maybe we could consider some positive resolutions or what have you. But, you know, I think the state of Virginia's got plenty of money right now to take care of a safety issue like that.
I think Ray's going to disagree with you, but here he comes.
He's going to say it's our responsibility.
Well, regardless, a half a million dollars is a half a million dollars. And it's relatively difficult to come by. The part of what we have been able to do is work with the district, through the district funding, to pay for this first phase. Part of the reason that we haven't proceeded on to the second phase or made it all at one time was that we have been having some difficulty getting the Akerson's and the Yamamoto's excited enough to want to engage with us. And hope, you know, had that happened, maybe we would have had a different funding scenario.
I got you.
But unfortunately, it hasn't been quite the case. But when the construction entrance went in and the notices went out, then the entrance began to get a little, get a little. And as a matter of fact, I meet with the Akerson's Thursday. And Mrs. Yamamoto has been just fantastic to work with. And I believe the Akerson's will be as well once they understand what the gravity of the situation is. Honestly, if you're living in their houses and looking over the bank, it's a little bit difficult to tell what's going on down there, looking in that direction. But as you can see from that photo that we had up there, you get on the other side of that thing and look back, it's a whole different view.
We appreciate everything y'all do at VDOT. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah. Ray, how much does that scarp go up on private property?
About, right now, it's in about the 35 to 40-foot range.
Yeah.
They, those two properties come down in a point that I think you saw on the slide.
Go back, Debbie, if you want to.
And that easement and the scarp go up at that corner of the Yamamoto and the Akerson's.
Yeah.
It actually extends all the way up into there. If I'm not mistaken, the scarp ends up being about 85 feet from the Akerson's house and about 90 from Yamamoto's. So it's relatively close.
So I assume with the starting on their property, their insurance had no coverage to mitigate it?
That's where I don't know. What we do know is that the slope failed along 460. And that slope failure and the easement that was platted back in the 60s seem to tend to tell us that it's probably our responsibility to get it out there and take care of it. So we've been making those efforts ever since.
Yeah.
And there's just any number of technical issues that we've had to go over. If you're not careful, I'll get long-winded here, but I'll say this. One of the other things is that at the foot of the slope, there is a soil nail wall that will be behind this geosynthetically confined soil wall. So there's going to be a soil nail wall down there that you can't see. Then there will be a soil nail wall up along the Akerson's and the Yamamoto's that will be visible. And that scarp up there, in some places, is 14 feet high. So, I mean, it's pretty impressive if you walk up there and look at it.
Yeah. Just for the benefit of the board, I had to repair a scarp in a subdivision in Long Ridge. We spent about $85,000. But to protect the houses, we used helical piers and we put them under the house so the house wouldn't tip if the scarp ever went right up to the house. So there's still more that they could do if it became necessary.
Any other questions?
Ms. Cronice, or either one of you. When I look at what we have in our agenda, it's page 12 of our agenda, but it's page four of the PowerPoint. And it's right back.
Do you want to see some of the pictures?
Where you have the wall?
This one.
One more. Yeah, that one. Is that a hiking trail? I'm just-
That would make a fantastic location for one.
Just asking.
We, as a part of the 220 signal projects, we are getting pedestrian crosswalks across 220 at the Crossbow intersection. So we are starting to work with VDOT on some pedestrian accommodations where it makes sense. This is in emergency repairs, trying to preserve the roadway. So while I did ask-
I'm just looking.
There was a quick note, which is fine. But yes, we are working on pedestrian accommodations where we can.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you both.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. Item E is a first reading of ordinances. Item E1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 21, Article 9 of the Roanoke County Code. I'd like to welcome our county attorney, Peter Lubeck.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Code of Virginia authorizes localities to collect taxes on the gross proceeds of room rentals of hotels, motels, boarding houses, travel campgrounds, and other facilities that offer guest rooms, rented out for continuous occupancy for fewer than 30 consecutive days. And we call this type of tax a transient occupancy tax. Roanoke County presently requires the collection of transient occupancy tax at a rate of 7% of gross proceeds from room rentals on establishments offering lodging space able to accommodate five or more transients at one time. And this is pursuant to a section of the Code of Virginia that is specific to Roanoke County, Section 15.1, 38.19.1. And at this time, Chapter 21 of the Roanoke County Code requires some amendments to be consistent with recent amendments made to the Code of Virginia during the General Assembly's 2021 General Session and which become effective in September of 2021. Specifically, the Code of Virginia was amended to clarify that the tax should be imposed on any accommodations intermediaries. And this, an accommodations intermediary, is defined as any person other than an accommodations provider that facilitates the rental of the room. And without this amendment, that the tax has been applied only to the accommodations provider. So examples of accommodations intermediaries would include Airbnb, Verbo, Travelocity, Hotels.com, and other similar companies. Accordingly, it is proposed that the Roanoke County Code be amended to require that accommodations intermediaries also pay this transient occupancy tax. And in the board's packet, in the proposed amendments, you may also note that there are a couple other clarifications made to the Roanoke County Code. We have updated the definition of a transient to be consistent with the definition in the Code of Virginia and have also clarified that while the Commissioner of Revenue assesses the tax, the tax should be paid to the Roanoke County Treasurer. And we do recommend that the board approve this first reading and set the second reading in public hearing for September 7 of 2021. I'd be happy, of course, to answer any questions that you may have.
So any questions?
Mr. Lubeck, I didn't see, maybe I missed it. I didn't see a recitation for an effective date. Would we be looking at effective immediately upon adoption?
Yes, sir. It would be effective immediately. Yes, sir. We can certainly include that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We don't have a good estimate of how much we'll be collecting.
Unfortunately, we do not. And speaking with our Commissioner of Revenue, we understand that it may take some time for her and her staff to track down these companies and to begin to assess the tax.
So these establishments have to have a business license, right?
Sir.
If someone prints out space in their house, they're supposed to have a business license, aren't they not?
Yes. The accommodations providers must have a business license. The accommodations intermediaries, I would not foresee that they would necessarily have a business license in Roanoke County.
Good luck in forcing that.
Yes, it will be a challenge.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve first reading instead of second reading for September 7th?
I would make an appropriate motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Item F is a second reading of ordinances. Item F1 is an ordinance approving a lease with Dotcom Properties 4 LLC for 40 parking spaces on a lot located at 200 East Calhoun Street in Salem. This senior assistant county administrator, excuse me, county attorney.
Kind of promotion.
Oh, you got a promotion there.
De-motion.
Are there any changes since the first reading?
No, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes. I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Thank you. Item G, are there any appointments that need to be given to the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do have a citizen ask about getting on the library board for my district. So how do I need to handle that?
Just get the information to Debbie.
To Debbie, okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
All right. No others. Item H is a consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the former forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Item I is Citizens' Comments Communications. Well, no, no one's here. Item J is Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports? I'll make a motion if we receive the reports. Just, Chair. Just a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Item K is Reports and Inquiries that Board Members Today. I'll begin with Mrs. Hooker out of Catawba.
I just have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, that I want to comment on, and the first being that we are back in school. Roanoke County Schools has begun. They're back in session. Students are in the classroom, so just be aware of that on the roads. And as you see students walking, be especially careful, and we hope and pray for a successful in-person school year this year. I was able to attend the VACO conference last week, and the chief objective is to discuss and agree on preliminary legislative position statements, and all of those will be finalized in November of this year. I sit on the Education Committee, and our priority is full state funding should be achieved without reduction to other parts of state public education budgets or to the core services. VACO supports voluntary incentives that encourage localities to increase teacher salaries to reflect the national average. We are woefully below that. VACO supports funding that will increase the number of students leaving high school with workforce-ready credentials, and we acknowledge the close connection between the workforce-ready credentials and our local economic development, and have some other interesting things regarding that. I also sat in on the Health and Human Resources Committee for, not the entire meeting, for a majority of it, and VACO supports efforts to address census pressures at state hospitals through funding measures in addition to ongoing efforts to support community-based crisis services. And this was really important to us regarding the Catawba Hospital, so I was pleased to see that. And VACO supports additional state resources to assist in the local administration of CSA programs, which has potential to really be beneficial also. I've had several phone calls regarding the extension of broadband, phone calls, text, many other avenues of communication. And I'm pleased to report that we've been encouraged by the state to plan for universal broadband coverage in order to be eligible for some of the grants that are available. And so we're going to continue to work on that plan, and I am so appreciative of the support of this board for that measure. It's very important for our citizens today. We wish it could be implemented immediately. It will take some time. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to encourage this board to consider some zoning ordinance changes that would allow a higher pole height in some of our more rural areas to better accommodate wider broadband coverage. So for a later date, I would like for us to be able to take up that topic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. I also understood Elon Musk is sending up 100 satellites or whatever so he can provide broadband to everybody through a cheaper method. So there we go. Mr. North?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, attended, along with Supervisor Hooker, the VACO Summer Meeting at Short Pump, Virginia. It was good to be back together again with many of our colleagues and administrators all over the state of Virginia. I serve with the Transportation Committee as well as the Economic Development Steering Committee. As far as transportation news, the new train to and from Washington, DC and Roanoke will begin now in the spring of 2022 and not in January due to some delay attributed to COVID. We advocated for capital school funding for all career and technical school construction for its local economic impact. This was received positively by the committee chairman and others around the state whom are challenged to attract and retain a trained workforce. It is hoped that this effort will become part of next year's legislative agenda by the Virginia counties in both the Education Committee as well as the Economic Development Steering Committees. Lastly, on broadband, it continues to be the priority of the Economic Development Steering Committee, and VACO supports efforts to streamline the permitting of broadband infrastructure in the VDOT right-of-way at railroad crossings and within utility easements. And that's all.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. I would like to see, as a lot of money has been raining down, as Mr. North said, I'd like us to prepare a letter to Congressman Ben Klein to see if we can speed up the repair of the Parkway, which is between Cave Spring District and Windsor Hills. From what I've been told, there is no solution, there is no funds right now that I know of that's in the pipeline to repair it, and it potentially could be as late as 2023
Wow.
for repair. So we need to talk about that as a group and send that to our congressman, you know, under your signature, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
And see if he can find some of that ARPA money that's raining down to get that. That's a significant, to me, an economic driver for our locality. Also want to pass along prayers and peace to Mr. Mahoney for the passing of his dad as they go through adjustment right now. Also want to report that I attended Festival of India. This is a cultural heritage of food and events that went on in the city, but we were invited as county representatives. Jill Lupe was there. We represented by being a sponsor, I believe, at that. But it was a great time to meet a different culture and see the many different things, taste their food. They're a part of our community, and I enjoyed being a part of that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I just tag on to that quickly?
Absolutely.
I also attended that festival, and just a quick shout-out to Mr. Sonny Shaw for all the organization and graciousness that he affords this community in offering that. It really is a great event, and appreciate so much their attention to education and to business owners and loyalty to the community. So thank you, David, for bringing that up.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney?
I want to thank everyone for your kind comments and condolences on the passing of my father. Second, I was going to ask, and I'm glad Mr. Radford and Mrs. Hooker would talk about the festival of India. My wife and I had planned to attend, and unfortunately, personal problems prevented us from doing that. But from the comments that you've made and what I've seen on Facebook and others, it looked like a wonderful festival. And I apologize to our friends that we were not able to make it, but it looked like you had a great time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If everyone hasn't been made aware, I know I made a comment earlier about the implementation that we put together a number of years ago for the 419 Reimagine. It continues to take shape. I know that Ms. Lupe announced to us today that Chili's, which is probably the number-one restaurant people have been after me for years to make sure it gets here, well, now we can tell those folks it's coming. That and Popeyes are the newest additions to the Tanglewood area. Looks like Corrigan is coming along quite nicely with their children's center. We'll look forward to seeing that open and how it'll help kids in our area and from all over southwest Virginia, I'm sure. But at this time, we're going to go into our work session, and to keep a pretty good flow of the afternoon, I'm going to reverse L1 and L2. We're going to go into work session first to have a work session with the Board of Supervisors on a potential regulation of running bamboo. And then, secondly, we'll do the work session with the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Towing Advisory Board as they give us some recommendations this afternoon. Is there any concern with making that change now? Okay. All right. We will come back into an open, come back to order for a new business item after that. Then following that, we will go into a closed session. But we will now adjourn to the third floor.
To defend the FSM and to gives it the right to use facilities, bases, sites.
That's Satu Lame, Vice President of the East-West Center. Basically, this means the U.S. is their sole defender. Lame says this puts them in a very unique position.